Good evening. We'll call a meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Counselor Geisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelly.
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here.
Counselor Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here.
Uh, so do any counselors have announcements this evening? None, thank you. And we will move on to the public hearing for the truth in taxation hearing. Uh, Mr. Mulder.
Um, we're gonna go over briefly with the proposed budget. Um, and so I'd like our Director of Finance Administration, Kevin Orm, to kind of, kind of do a high view of the proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of council. Um, in July, we started this process. We presented to you the capital improvement plan. We presented to you the 2026 proposed payroll budget. Since then, at various council meetings, we presented the other parts of the budget, the other pieces. As we've told you before, payroll makes up the large majority of the budget over, uh, over two-thirds of the budget goes to payroll. And as far as revenue, the bulk of the revenue, almost 90% of the revenue is supported by property taxes in the general fund. So those are numbers that we've given you before that obviously impact the budget. In September, you, the council, set a preliminary levy that went to St. Louis County. Taxpayers later received in the mail a proposed property tax statement based on that preliminary levy number. Since that time, we have reduced expenditures at some level. And so that is going to reduce the number before you on Resolution 2025-176. The, uh, if you approve that tonight, your final tax statement, the citizen's final tax statement, will be lower, the city portion, from the preliminary statement that they received in the mail already. So after we reduce the expenditures, the overall levy increase for the general fund is 7.48%. Initially, it was over 10%. The effective tax rate for the city, if approved, would actually go down almost 1%. That is the rate paid per valuation dollar. Previously, it was going up about 1.75%. If approved tonight, this levy will be submitted to St. Louis County and be part of the property taxes for 2026. You could table it, and then they would, um, need to be approved at the next meeting before the end of the year. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Uh, the total dollar amount you said in our budget was going up around $500,000 from one year to the next?
The total levy dollars is going up a little more than 500, between 600 and 700,000. And 80% of that is payroll costs.
Thank you. Mr. Mulder, anything else before we open it up for public input?
Uh, no, not at this point.
Okay, we have one person that has signed up for speaking to the council, and that's Jackie Dolan. Could you step forward and state your name and address, please?
Hello, everyone. My name is Jackie Dolan. I'm at 5842 Old Highway 2 here in Hermantown. Uh, thank you for your service. I always want to say that first. I didn't really prepare any remarks, which I'm probably going to regret. Um, I just wanted to maybe vent a little, and I know this isn't in your wheelhouse, but I figured it's important for you to hear. We've been in our house now for a while. And in 2019, our taxable market value of our house was $220,600. In the proposed taxes, according to the county, it's now $342,144. It's a 55% increase in value since 2019. My property tax statement, as proposed tonight, I've got an increase of 15.5% or $631. The county's actual to propose is an increase of 21.5. City of Hermantown's proposed and actual is 16.6% is what it equals on mine. And then the average comes down to 15.5. With everything going on, with everything going up, I appreciate the work session that you had last week. I wish I could have been there, um, and that conversation that you had in trying to bring the costs down. But we're seriously getting taxed out of our residents. I mean, it's $4,700 for my house. No changes, no improvements, no additions, no nothing. And it's just getting to be a lot. Homeowner's insurance up $1,000, car insurance up, groceries up. You know, my increase at work for my pay, 3%, it's just crazy. So, thank you for your time. I just guess I wanted to say a little bit. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak during the truth in taxation public input? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the city council for the truth in taxation hearing? Okay, we will move on to the resolutions. Resolution 2025-176. Resolution adopting the final 2025 property tax levy collectible in 2026 in the amount of 10, 10 million, $112,191. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Do any counselors have any comments on this?
Uh, I appreciate Counselor LeBlanc's suggestion that we have a work session. And, uh, thanks, everybody, for making it, making it, and Mr. Mulder and team to put it all together. So I think it was a valuable time spent. So, thank you.
Uh, anything else from the council? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Next is Resolution 2025-177. Resolution adopting the final 2026 city general fund budget in the amount of $9,864,686 and the overall budget of $28,02830. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Any comments from council? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Next is public discussion or comment. This is a time that individuals can address the council about any item not on the agenda. Time limit is three minutes per person. We have two lists here. First one is Jeffrey Donahue. And, uh, after Jeffrey is Allison Hafton. Could you start with your name and address, please?
Yes, Jeffrey Donahue, 5540 Pine Hill Road. I'm in Midway Township, about 4.8 miles away from the proposed data center. The data center can't be built on this site. It is a heavy industrial use in a residential community. Can't be done, legally can't be done, logistically can't be done. Two-thirds the size of Mall of America. You want to put on our one-lane roads next to homes. Can't be done. You'll need 300 4-megawatt generators, each one generating over 100 decibels. Each one. That's about the sound of a jet taking off, about 100, 110 decibels. With silencers and sound enclosures, you can get that down to about 75 decibels. 75 decibels is substantially higher than the limits for residential. You have to comply with residential, as you well know, because you're adjacent residential. Not one generator can be built on that site, not one. Can you imagine the cumulative effect of 300 jets taking off at the same time continuously for as long as those generators run? Not one generator can be started on that site. You go with smaller ones, you lose about five decibels. You can't build those either. There's so many reasons this data center can't be built on this site. Shouldn't have been rezoned. This council knows that the bulk of the people that live here don't want this data center. We don't want it. Why did you vote to rezone it when 90% of the people don't want it? This isn't democracy here. It's not. Democracy means you vote the way your people want. This community, whether it's Hermantown residents or other, we don't want this data center on this site. So I would ask that you rezone it back to residential or whatever it was. Data center isn't, I mean, this would be the largest user of electricity in the state of Minnesota. And you're putting it next to our homes? 30 seconds. It's not light industrial. You guys can't increase the sound limits that are loud. Could decrease them, but you can't increase them. You, I know you wrote the, rewrote the zoning laws so you could have this. It, it, it's not gonna work. We don't want it. Even if it does work, we don't want it. Listen to your constituents, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Allison Hafton, and after that is Alethia Montgomery.
Good evening. Allison Hafton at 5971 St. Louis River Road, Proctor, Minnesota. With Thanksgiving just past us here, I just want to share a few things that I'm thankful for with you. I'm thankful for the health of my family and friends. I'm thankful that I have three amazing kids and an incredible husband. They're at home without me now, as I'm here speaking to you. This year, we celebrated 10 years in our home, our first home. A home we chose because of the beautiful wooded property, a spring melt stream that runs through it, the quietness of the rural neighborhood and the wildlife that it contains. I'm thankful to watch my husband walk out the back door into the woods to hunt and harvest a deer. I'm thankful to watch my kids run around in the yard and the woods, knowing nothing is going to harm them. They can have that fun childhood. I'm thankful for dark skies and quiet nights. This home of mine that I speak so dearly of is less than a mile from the recently rezoned Adolf properties and the proposed data center. We just put new windows in this home, because we plan to stay for a long time. And I'm sure you all know the cost of new windows. I hope it was for naught. All that I'm thankful for in my home is at risk if the data center goes in. We won't have dark skies and quiet nights. The wildlife will disappear because of the sound and the light and the frequencies emitted. Um, I'm, I'm also thankful for the freedom of speech that we have in this country, my ability to speak it here tonight, our freedom to gather, our freedom to protest. I will keep investigating. I will keep fighting. I will keep showing up to speak out against this data center for my home, for my kids, and for my own quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alethia Montgomery, and after that is Derek Strum.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening. I wanted to join along with my neighbors and my friends and my community members. Alethia Montgomery, 5713 St. Louis River Road.
Thank you.
I wanted to have my voice join with my neighbors and my friends and my community members. We've been a resident of Hermantown since 2006. I taught at the Hermantown schools until 2013, when we moved away out of state. Two of my three children have graduated from the Hermantown schools. When we moved back in 2016, we chose to relocate to Hermantown. Our youngest wanted to graduate from the Hermantown High School. And we bought our current home. I learned about the data center from a text message from my dad that day that it was released to the Duluth News Tribune, asking me how we would be affected. Our home and our property are along the proposed data center borders, probably less than half a mile from it. We had no idea. No one has come to our home to investigate, um, what our property looks like, how it would be impacted by the flow of water. We haven't been involved with communication about, um, what would happen with the spring melt when we remove the forest land, the wetlands, you add increased impervious, um, surfaces. Our home is down the slope of the site of both St. Louis River and, uh, road, and then also the data center. In the spring, we end up with, um, vernal, um, streams and ponds just from typical snow melt. What is going to happen when we, if this proposed center goes through with these profound environmental changes? We chose our home as our future retirement home. The threat of the property value plummeting is, um, heartbreaking for us. I've worked hard on cultivating spaces for wildlife, from pollinator gardens. I'm a, I have a monarch wave station that has been, um, counted as part of the migratory routes. We've got apple trees that I've planted. We have chickens and honeybees. I don't know how that fits with the common AUAR, which is for urban development and brownfields. My property, our home, is teeming with rural amenities. It does not sound like, um, brownfields or urban areas. I wanted to add my voice to the others in opposition to this proposed data center for the future of, um, our retirement, for the future of our home, the future of our community members, and the community of all those who are involved. Thank you.
Next is Tom Strum, and after that, Annette Ralph.
Name's Derek Strom, 5853 Highway 194. Our community needs new leadership. This data center is being based off of so-called experts. Back in the 60s and 70s, when the measles were out, people sent them home. But experts nowadays say you gotta have all these vaccinations. These experts that you so-called have is only here to fit your narrative. Prime example why you all need to be removed is mismanagement of funds. I am sitting here with documents just from the stormwater tax. Stormwater paying your salary, sir? Because according to this, just last year alone, uh, over 100,000 was paid to engineers. Why are we doing that? This is supposed to be to preserve the wetlands, but yet we got salaries, Medicaid, all this other stuff that's going into this stormwater management. According to this, you have three employees that are making 15 bucks an hour that are doing all the work. They even have a little bit of overtime. This is just one little aspect that I've looked into as far as the city council's mismanagement. Now, I have recently requested another data inquiry for I want all your text messages, emails, and transcripts of everything having to do with this data center. Because when I told people here last time, was I was planning on coming here and telling you all that I'm gonna do whatever I can to recall every single one of you in an election. But people don't know what's going on. They listen to communist organizations as the Duluth News Tribune and Northland News to get all their information from the experts that you so-called people pick up. So now I'm going out and I'm gonna prove everything that you've been telling us is a lie. And in '26, one of you council members is losing their position to me, because I will be running. And in '28, Mayor, I'm coming for you. Under the Minnesota data statutes, Chapter 3, Section 3, all data collected, received, and maintained by government entities shall be made public unless specified underneath Chapter, Chapter 13, Section 6. Under Chapter 13, Section 6, it basically involves that unless it involves minor personal information or national security, that stuff must be released. Now, if you guys, because of what I've told you, decide to delete, uh, remove any of the information, 30 seconds. you could be held under Minnesota statute 138.225. And that is a misdemeanor charge, which can go up to $3,000 fine and up to one year in jail. Basically, I am coming for you guys, because we are tired of this. You guys don't care what happens here. I sit and watch my fellow members up here crying, doing everything they can to get you guys to change your minds, and you guys don't care. So now you gotta deal with me.
Thank you. Next, signed up is Annette Ralph. And there are no other names on our list. Is there any other list out in the hall? Name and address, please.
Annette Ralph, 5781 St. Louis River Road. For a while, I've been asking myself, at what price did we and our neighbors become expendable to you? And at what point did you decide that our lives and our homes, properties, didn't matter anymore? At what price did you decide it was okay to pollute the wetlands and our wet water? At what price did you decide that it was okay for all of us to endure this for the rest of our lives? At what price did you decide that it would be okay for this to happen? What was the price that they promised you to look the other way? Well, I found my answer on your website, under the questions and answers, and it says, "What about taxes?" Minnesota has a higher tax rate for commercial development than residential. Although the equation can be complex, commercial rates are usually twice as high or more than residential rates. Currently, this area generates about 80,000 per year in taxes, with the new project likely to generate more than 10 times that in a commercial tax upon full construction. So, I don't think it's gonna be 10 times that. But let's give you the benefit of the doubt. If you think it's gonna be 10 times, so that's $800,000. And you divide that between all of our properties and our people and all the surrounding communities. That's just a drop in the bucket to this 50-point, 500 or 50 fortune company or whatever. I don't know why we don't matter. But that's the reason, the data center wanted to build it here because it's convenient for them. You didn't have to say, "Okay, that's okay. We'll do that." You could put it somewhere else where it's not gonna bother anybody's homes and properties and lives and uproot everything. So I think that everyone that votes for this should be forced to live within 350 feet of the data center. And then for the next 30 years, and then you decide and come back and tell us why you think it's so perfect and great.
Thank you. Okay, has anybody else wish to speak to the council under general public discussion? Otherwise, we have public discussion on the items on the agenda. Step forward and state your name and address.
Thank you. Noel Donahue, 5540 Pine Hill Road. I wasn't sure if I was gonna speak tonight. I've spoken before. You've heard me. I'm against the data center. But listening to everyone else, it kind of made me realize some more reasons why. And, and I'm not saying it because you're gonna listen to me. I'm saying it so that I can say it, so it makes me feel better. I don't live in Hermantown. I live right next door. I live in Midway Township. In Midway Township, we're good neighbors. I don't put things on my property that are gonna make my neighbors hate me. I don't put things on my property that are going to bring down their property value. I don't have ruckus parties. They don't have ruckus parties. When one of us has trouble getting our car out of our yards, the other one comes over and helps. We make sure everybody knows what's going on. And when I first found out about this data center, I thought, my God, how could Midway Township have done this? How could they have signed off with you guys? Because they had to have known, right? My, my people had to know what was going on until I went and talked to them. And you know what? They didn't sign NDAs. They don't do that. They didn't know anything, because nobody from Hermantown, nobody here, thought to talk to them as this project butts up to the same property. I mean, you wouldn't do that to your neighbor, I would suspect, or I would hope. So I don't understand why you would do this to everybody else. You've only talked about what we'll do supposedly to help Hermantown. I don't believe those things. But it's gonna supposedly, you said, do good things for you, for people in Hermantown. But it's not doing anything good for anyone outside of Hermantown. It's going to give all the negatives to everyone who borders around it. And there was, it doesn't seem there's like any thought given to us, given to the good neighbors that we try to be. And I don't understand why Hermantown, and, and here's the thing, it's not Hermantown. That's the thing. Because the people here, they're good neighbors. They're the ones who care. But it's the five of you making these decisions, not listening to your constituents. And I, I don't understand it. I don't understand where you went from being a good neighbor and being the people who you want to be around to being 30 seconds. people who are disliked. I mean, you're, if you go through with this, you're taking away people's lives. You're taking away their, their forever homes and their thoughts for their children and their grandchildren and what they came and what they love about Minnesota. I hope you change your mind.
Anyone else under general public discussion? Please step forward and start with your name and address.
Uh, Emma Rixman, 5215 Chris Drive. People come up here with a wide range of emotions, confused, mad, frustrated, angry, uh, scared beyond recognition for this project, uh, a worry that they have never known. Uh, I see people coming up here with their hearts bared, and to watch Kelsey Mack at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting come up and politely bear her soul and see her as a shell of a human being for all of the energy that she is putting forward into this. I just deeply identify with her. That is what this is doing to people in your community. And it takes extreme vulnerability to stand up here and tell you how we feel. Uh, typically, my strategy has been to come here with prepared remarks and read them out, because this is a difficult exchange for me, and I like to try to keep on track. And I'd like to feel like my three minutes of time amounts to something, uh, that the content that I create can help move the dial in the agenda. Uh, today, I am feeling very exhausted. I haven't really prepared any remarks. Because I'm not really feeling like the city at large is open to receiving our message. Please show me that I matter. Please show us that we matter. You were elected by the voters to see all of you in favor for the rezone. I can't imagine that that represents all of the voters. And to, to think that all of you could vote to move this data center forward certainly does not represent all of the voters. It was also very deflating to learn that despite whatever planning and zoning might have to say about potential permits, uh, especially if they were to nay them, it is within your right to disregard those, those recommendations. And that, quite frankly, feels very deflating. I'm tired. I'm a mom, so I'm definitely tired.
30 seconds.
Uh, I'm up here and I'm fighting, and this is taking away from my time and productivity. This is taking away from other people in the community's time and productivity. I would like to have a more meaningful conversation. I would like to have a more meaningful conversation with you, some form of town hall. It would be nice to exchange words with you, to hear where your head is at, to know maybe some of us have you in our corner or that we are in your corner, that you represent us. You represent the people who voted for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak to the council under general public discussion? Please step forward and state your name and address.
My name is Bob Comer. I live at 5757 St. Louis River Road. I'm worried about our democracy. NDAs. Please answer yes or no, each one of you. Can you cite me anywhere in our democratic constitution where the usage of secrecy such as NDAs are part of or described as an acceptable principle of democracy? Do you get it? Yes or no? Will you sit down? That's a no answer. Stand up to say yes. You don't have to say a word. Okay, everybody who knows. You can't find anywhere, you can't cite anywhere in our constitution? Thank you. That's what I thought. I don't know if you picked up the Hermantown Star, the last publication, November 26th. There was an article by Wade Petridge editorial called "Cost of Silence." He states transparency is not a bureaucratic hurdle. It is the foundation of our democracy. Do you agree with that? Live group here, thank you. Sorry I have to say that, but this is bearing down on all of us. And it should be bearing down on you too. You are losing our democracy right along with us. And I didn't fight for this country to lose our democracy or our voice. Do you all hear me? Silence, thank you. That's what I expected. Chad Ronchetti. He states that, not quote, but the word just slipped my mind, paraphrasing him. "It is the foundation of our democracy, civil discourse." That's what he claims is the foundation of our democracy. I would claim taxation without representation is tyranny. Taxation with representation is the cornerstone of our democracy. We pay taxes-
Thirty seconds, Bob.
What's that?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay. We pay taxes, we expect representation. Do you understand that? All right, my last comment is what's taken place in St. Louis County at the meetings there. One of the commissioners stated that if we wish to...
Is there anyone else? No one else wishes to speak? We'll end the general public discussion and move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda contains Resolution 2025-178, Resolution approving pay request number two for Keen Creek Trail Segment Four Construction to Vite Construction Company in the amount of three hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Minutes approval or correction of the November 17th, 2025 City Council continuation minutes and November 25th, 2025 City Council Work Session minutes, along with accounts payable, approved general city warrants from November 16th, 2025 through November 30th, 2025 in the amount of one million, five hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next two are ordinances for a second reading. Ordinance 2025-20, an ordinance renewing a franchise granted to MediaCom Minnesota LLC to construct, operate, and maintain a cable television system in the city of Hermantown, setting forth conditions relating to the continuation of the franchise, providing for the regulation and use of cable television system, and prescribing penalties for the violation of its provisions. Do we have a motion relating to this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Peterson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder.
So this is an ordinance that would grant MediaCom a franchise to operate in the city's right-of-way for their cable system. This is a non-exclusive ordinance or franchise. And we've had it, the last time it was updated was in 2015. It's good for ten years. As part of that, they do pay a franchise fee, and that franchise fee is then used for, primarily in the past, it's been audiovisual equipment for the city and for video cameras in our parks.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Is there any public input on ordinance 2025-20? This will be the last opportunity for public comment on the ordinance renewing a franchise agreement with MediaCom. Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is ordinance 2025-21, an ordinance granting to Minnesota Power a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, repair, and maintain in the city of Hermantown necessary poles, lines, fixtures, and appurtenances for the furnishing of electric energy to the city, its inhabitants, and others, and to use the public ways and public grounds of the city for such purposes, and prescribing certain terms and conditions thereof. Is there a motion relating to this?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Peterson, Mr. Mulder.
Similar to the franchise that was approved for MediaCom, this is the same thing for Minnesota Power. It allows them to have their electrical distribution system within the city's right-of-way. We've had this in place in excess of twenty years. It was last updated in 2015. It's a ten-year franchise agreement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Do we have any public input on ordinance 2025-21? Is there any public input on an ordinance granting to Minnesota Power a non-exclusive franchise within the city of Hermantown? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is an ordinance 2025-22, an ordinance imposing a franchise fee on Minnesota Power. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder.
This ordinance is, again, a repeat of what we've had in the past. Back in 2015, even prior to that, we've had a franchise fee from Minnesota Power that they typically pass on to their customers but then paid to the city. This money is used specifically for paying for streetlights and streetlight repairs, the power for streetlights, and also any repairs and/or improvements we made to traffic signals on city streets.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? I'd like to comment that until we instituted this franchise fee for a streetlight fund, there were no streetlights on any of the intersections or roadways in Hermantown, except for a very few. Since then, we've set a policy of trying to have one, a streetlight at every intersection for safety reasons. And it's taken several years to get to the point where we are now. But this has allowed us to create a safer driving environment in the community. Any other comments from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Do we have any public input on ordinance 2025-22? Do we have any public input on an ordinance imposing a franchise fee on Minnesota Power? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is ordinance 2025-23. This is a first reading. We will not be voting on this ordinance this evening. The second reading is scheduled for our next meeting in two weeks. 2025-23, an ordinance of the city of Hermantown, Minnesota, amending Chapter 18 of the Hermantown Zoning Code by adding a new section, 1830, accessory dwelling units. Mr. Mulder, do we want Mr. Johnson to explain this?
Yes, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Kind of give a brief synopsis of this ADU ordinance here. Little background first is the city staff has been discussing both the city council and primarily with Planning and Zoning Commission, the addition of accessory dwelling units to the residential zone throughout the city. So as part of that process, city staff looked at a number of different communities around the state. How do they handle ADUs? Looked at ones that allowed those and tried to glean some information from that. So in the writing of the city's ordinance, drawing on some information that other communities have used, as well as discussions, once again, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Put a highlight, we're looking at a minimum size of these ADU structures at three hundred and fifty square feet, a maximum size of one thousand square feet. The owner of the property must reside somewhere on that premises, whether they're in the primary home or whether they're in that ADU structure. Water and sewer connections can come from either the primary structure and/or the street. They can make individual connections that way. If there's going to be a well and septic site associated with this, they would have to go through the St. Louis County process to verify that the site can actually support an additional ADU unit. And at that point, that information is passed on to the city's building official who handles permits at that point. There'd be a requirement of one additional parking space for the ADU. This could be part of a detached garage or its own separate structure. The maximum height, as well as setbacks, mirror that underlying zoning district associated with the residence. The height is thirty-five feet. Setbacks are generally fifty feet front yard, forty in the rear, and then ten to fifteen feet in the side, or once again, depending upon the zoning district. They're going to be allowed in all residential zones and districts. And then they're only associated with single-family homes. We'd not permit an ADU on a twin-home site that way. And then lastly, this would be through an administrative review, an approval only, similar to like we do with defense permits. An application would come in. City staff would notify the adjoining properties of the ADU application and be able to solicit any comments or questions at that point.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Okay, this is the first reading, but we do have public comment available. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on the first reading of this ordinance? Does anyone wish to comment on the first reading of ordinance 2025-23? Is there any public comment on the adding a new section to Hermantown Zoning Code, Section 1830, accessory dwelling units? Hearing none, we will move on to resolutions. Resolution 2025-179, resolution authorizing the publication of a summary of an ordinance renewing the franchise granted to MediaCom LLC. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler to approve. Do we... Mr. Mulder?
Just a brief explanation. This resolution authorizes the publication of a summary of that ordinance. The ordinance is several pages long, so we just print the summary of that. The full ordinance is available on our website and at City Hall for inspection.
Thank you. Any comment by council? Is there any public comment on this resolution? Do we have any public comment on Resolution 2025-179? Any public comment on the publication of a summary of an ordinance renewing a franchise granted to MediaCom Minnesota LLC? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is another summary, Resolution 2025-180, resolution authorizing the publication of a summary of an ordinance granting to Minnesota Power franchise. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
Again, just like the previous resolution, this is just a resolution for the publication of a summary of the Minnesota Power franchise agreement. Again, it's a long document, so we just print the summary. That full document is available at City Hall and online.
Thank you. Any questions by council? Any public comment on this resolution? Any public comment on Resolution 2025-180? Any public comment on the resolution authorizing the publication of a summary of an ordinance granting a franchise agreement to Minnesota Power? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2025-181, resolution adopting assessment role for delinquent utility charges for 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Peterson, Mr. Mulder.
This is an annual resolution that we have every year for people that do not pay their utility accounts, where then we then put an assessment on their property taxes for that delinquent amount.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2025-181? Is there any public input on the resolution adopting an assessment role for delinquent utility charges for 2025? Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2025-182, resolution approving application of assessment role number 541A55 for deferral of assessment against the property for construction of road improvement, District Number 541 and 542, hardship deferral. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder.
The city has a deferral process for people that are assessed on road projects. The city has a deferral process for people that are assessed on road projects if they meet certain conditions. This particular individual applied for that deferral, met those conditions, and we're recommending that you provide the deferral for her.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-two? Any public input on the approval of the application for deferral for a property in the construction improvement district number five forty-one and five forty-two, a hardship deferral? Roll call, please.
Councilor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councilor Jelly.
Aye.
Councilor Geisler.
Aye.
Councilor Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-three, resolution authorizing the city of Hermantown to participate in a St. Louis County maintenance program, and we have found out for sure that it involves striping. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Peterson. Mr. Mulder.
So this would be a cooperative agreement from the county as opposed to going up for a separate bid on ourselves. We just piggyback on the county's contract for striping of its roads. So we would participate in their contract for certain roads in Hermantown.
And that would give us the same pricing as St. Louis County?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-three? Is there any public input on the resolution authorizing the city of Hermantown to participate in the St. Louis County maintenance program? Roll call, please.
Councilor Jelly.
Aye.
Councilor Geisler.
Aye.
Councilor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-four, resolution authorizing a contract for managed IT services with Computer Integration Technologies Incorporated, CIT. Do we have a motion relating to this?
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilor LeBlanc to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Peterson. Mr. Mulder.
So we've had a contracted services for our, kind of our managed IT services for a number of years. We've decided to go up for proposals this year, and we received four proposals. Computer Integration Technologies was the low proposal. Good recommendations from other cities, both in terms of doing the city work, but also particularly as it relates to some of the police department work. So we're recommending this change in the contract.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-four? Any public input on the resolution authorizing a contract for managed IT services? Roll call, please.
Councilor Geisler.
Aye.
Councilor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councilor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-five, resolution approving preliminary and final planned unit development with JLG Enterprises of Hermantown LLP for the Peyton Acres planned unit development. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Peterson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Geisler. Should we have Mr. Johnson address this?
Yes, please.
Eric?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. What's before us this evening, it's three lots within the Peyton Acres Phase Four development. That Phase Four is going to have fourteen lots in it, and as part of that, three of these lots and the interior portion of that are proposed to function as a PUD. That would allow the applicant, which is the JLG Enterprises, to potentially construct up to three two-family homes for a total of six units total. But in the process of developing this property, the applicants have received multiple calls from people looking to purchase properties, in some cases getting adjoining properties, so they could have family members living close by. So as this project has continued to develop, they are looking to provide an additional, different type of housing style within this development that could provide that opportunity for people. So what that would be is the ability to construct, potentially construct three twin homes associated on three lots within that development. These homes would utilize that same sidewalk system associated with it. And once again, it provides another housing style that's not currently within this development. The project would also utilize existing roadway system, utilities, et cetera, and have the same building setbacks associated with the other single-family homes within that development.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. If they would decide to do only one of the three, and it doesn't work out for them, and then at some other point say, well, we want to put these back to single-family residences or single-family lots, do they have to, can they just do that? Or do they have to go through the process to undo a PUD?
What we've done in the past is, we have had that scenario happen before. And what, at that point, we suggested, or at least the applicant never went through with it, but it'd be the modification of the PUD to bring it back into it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-five? Any public input on the approval of the resolution for preliminary and final planned unit development with JLG Enterprises or Peyton Acres? Roll call, please.
Councilor Jelly.
Aye.
Councilor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councilor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-six, resolution approving preliminary and final plat of Peyton Acres Phase Four and imposing conditions on that final plat. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Geisler. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson go over this again?
Yes, please.
Great. Thank you again. This is the last phase of the Peyton Acres development. It consists of fourteen lots. It's essentially the extension of Peyton Drive that will continue to intersect into the Oak Ridge Development just to the south of that. It also includes a small cul-de-sac located up in the northeast corner that would have four additional lots up there. So similar to the other phases in this development, these are all half-acre minimum lots utilizing that roadway system and utilities that have been constructed to date. There will continue to be an interior sidewalk system, which will, once again, finalize that link throughout the Peyton Acres development. The Stormwater Pond, which was constructed as a previous phase, will accommodate all the stormwater associated with this phase. So as I had mentioned, this is similar to the previous four phases that we'd had received.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-six? Is there any public input on the approval of the preliminary and final plat of Peyton Acres Phase Four? Roll call, please.
Councilor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councilor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilor Geisler.
Aye.
Councilor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eight seven, resolution approving a special use permit for grading and filling within a natural shoreline overlay area. Do we have a motion regarding this?
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilor LeBlanc to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Jelly. And I'm told we will have two members abstaining this evening. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson go over this?
Yes, please.
Eric?
Great. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So this is a four-point-one acre parcel. It's located in the northeast quadrant of Westburg Road and Maple Grove Road. Keene Creek exists on the south side of Maple Grove Road, and associated with Keene Creek is a natural shoreline area. So that shoreline area extends over Maple Grove Road and about two hundred plus or minus feet into this property per se. So the applicant is looking to construct a fifteen thousand square foot office-based building along with a forty-three vehicle parking lot. None of that work is happening in the shoreline district. What is happening is actually the construction of a portion of that detention pond associated with this development, as well as onsite grading for it. It would be approximately fourteen thousand square feet of work within that shoreline area. This is a similar process that we've gone through on other residential projects, and this is one of the, one of the few that actually falls within the, are commercially zoned areas within the city.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Questions?
As mentioned, I'll be abstaining.
I'll be abstaining as well.
Thank you. Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-seven? Is there any public input on the resolution approving a special use permit for grading and filling within a natural shoreline overlay area? Roll call, please.
Councilor Jelly.
Aye.
Councilor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is our final resolution, resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-eight, resolution naming softball field at Rose Road, Tom Bang Field. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilor Geisler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Wicklund?
Yes.
Fill us in on this.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We worked through a process that was started originally with a community effort out of the softball community to commemorate Tom Bang, whose legendary commitment to Hermantown through both his teaching efforts and his building of the softball program is really unparalleled. We went through a soft, a really thoughtful process with the park board because it's been a long time since we've done the naming of things, and we do have some new opportunities in our community where we do have corporate naming pieces that are helping to defray the cost, but also still want to have those commemorative naming pieces. And so they went through that thoughtful process and recommended definitely the naming of one of the fields over at Rose Road.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? And I am told twenty-three state tournament appearances and three state softball championships?
A little over seven hundred victories.
Thank you. Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-eight? Is there any public input on the resolution to name a softball field at Rose Road, Tom Bang Field? Roll call, please.
Councilor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Councilor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilor Geisler.
Aye.
Councilor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, a motion to recess?
Recess?
Motion by Councilor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.